All right, good evening. Before we get started, I've got a confession I have to make. All these years, and I've, you know, just thought the world of Chaplain Remco Brahmlet. And I just got schooled that I've been pronouncing it's "Brahmet." So, I apologize. But Chaplain Brahmlet, if you would lead us in invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been called worse, so. Let's pray together. Our God in heaven, this week we have thought deeply about the things that can divide a country, race, and sexual orientation, and age, and gender. We've thought about discrimination and the need to eliminate those things in our country. And that prompts us to pray tonight that you would grant that Milton and all of its residents would live in harmony with one another, with love and respect, and not fall prey to divisions, and hatred, and discrimination, and discord over such things. We pray that you give unity in mind and purpose to the council tonight, to the city staff, in the decisions that they have to make that affect the quality of life here in this city, and in the discharge of their duties. And as the evening falls, we pray that you watch over our cities, keep our police officers safe that are on the streets right now, patrolling, as well as our firefighters who are standing at the ready in their quarters to respond to any emergency. Set this city awash with your grace, and your love, and your mercy, and let us feel a touch of that in our hearts tonight. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, January 21st, 2015, to order. The city clerk for police, call, roll, and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the January 21st, 2015, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cellphones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or a general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
And Councilmember Bert Hewitt is absent and excused for the record. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome everybody here to our council meeting tonight. We appreciate you being here. Sudie, if you will please call the next item.
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 15-012.
Okay. We have a couple of things. I'd like to add a proclamation under reports and presentations, and I also think we want to add an executive session to discuss personnel. Is there anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I need to ask that the council do one other thing tonight with a little bit of explanation. We've got an alcohol beverage license that was advertised appropriately and should be on the agenda tonight, although it is flawed to some degree in the location where the sign was posted. So this is going to seem a little bit of a do and then an undo, but I'd like to add it during the approval of the meeting agenda, and then when we get to it in the agenda, we'll need to remove it at that point and re-advertise so that it's correctly advertised when it eventually comes forward. I hope that makes sense. Having said that, I'd like to add to the agenda under the public hearing, consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Sterling Arcade Incorporated, DBA Paradise Beer Yanni Point, located at 5310D, Winward Parkway, Milton, Georgia 3004.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on the agenda you want to add? Okay, I'll open up for motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the meeting agenda with the addition of a proclamation, executive session to discuss personnel, and the additional alcoholic beverage license that the city manager just mentioned.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Sudie, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda, if you don't mind reading that. Sidney Park, please.
Our first item is approval of the January 5th, 2015, city council regular meeting minutes. Agenda item number 15-013. Next, approval of the financial statements for the period ending November 2014. Agenda item number 15-014. Approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the city of Milton and Young Men's Christian Association of Metropolitan Atlanta, Inc. Agenda item number 15-015. Our fourth consent agenda item is approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the city of Milton and Blaze Sports America, Inc. Agenda item number 15-016. Next is approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the city of Milton and Eagle Sticks Rec, Inc. Agenda item number 15-017. Next, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the city of Milton and NFL Youth Football League, Inc. Agenda item number 15-018. Our seventh consent agenda item is approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the city of Milton and Halftime Sports, LLC. Agenda item number 15-019. Next, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the city of Milton and Core Physique, LLC. Agenda item number 15-020. Next, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the city of Milton and Newtown Recreation, Inc. Agenda item number 15-021. Our tenth consent agenda item is approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the city of Milton and Spurber Music. Agenda item number 15-022. Next, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the city of Milton and Fit2U. Agenda item number 15-023. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Engineering 303, LLC, for a boundary and topographic survey of fire station number 42. Agenda item number 15-024. Our thirteenth and final consent agenda item this evening, approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Ask K Electrical Contractors, Inc., for the replacement of the emergency operations generator at fire station number 41. Agenda item number 15-025.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion, Councilmember Luss, second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, moving on to the next item that we added under approval of the agenda. It is a presentation, and I'm proud to be able tonight to, for somebody that normally is really good at helping keep things quiet and get a proclamation in for somebody, I'm really proud tonight to be able to present a proclamation recognizing Sudie Gordon for the achievement of certified municipal clerk. So.
It's hard to pull one over on a clerk.
Did I do it? Did we do it?
Yeah.
All right. Whereas, whereas our municipal city clerk plays a vital role in our democracy, and whereas our municipal clerk plays an instrumental role in maintaining the efficiency and effectiveness of the entire public sector, rendering services to all, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, and workshops. And whereas Milton Municipal Clerk Sudie Gordon has completed all the educational requirements of the Georgia Clerks Certification Program, whereas Sudie Gordon is now a certified municipal clerk, whereas this accomplishment brings great recognition to the city of Milton and the city's commitment to professional standards, and whereas Sudie Gordon has shown exemplary dedication to the city of Milton and provides a vital service to the city of Milton. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton hereby recognize Sudie Gordon for her dedication and achievement of the designation Certified Municipal Court. It's given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on the 21st day of January 2015. And if you guys will come up for some with me and present this to our city clerk.
Sneaky, sneaky.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Look at it.
Okay, Sudie, if you can get back to work. If you would move on to our public hearing. Sudie, if you would please say on the first item.
of an alcohol beverage license to Shuttle and Swirl, Inc., doing business as Zola Italian Bistro, located at 2955 Bethany Ben, Milton, Georgia 3004. The applicant is Jonathan Mattson for wine, malt, beverages, and distilled spirits. Agenda item number 15-026. Ms. Stacy Eglis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item that you have before you is simply a change of ownership for Zola Italian Bistro, and they have adhered to all of the city requirements to get their alcohol beverage license. They've advertised properly, they've placed the sign properly, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing. Anything on the council or open up for a motion? Bill?
Yes, Jane and I ate their last Saturday night, I guess, the first time we've been in since they've changed ownership. Excellent meal, great service, good place to patronize, recommended to everybody in this city.
Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the issuance of an alcoholic beverage license to Shuttle and Swirl, doing business as Zola Italian Bistro. Agenda item number 15-026.
Second motion.
Okay, got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Luss. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Sudie, if you would call our next public hearing item that we added to our agenda.
I've got it. Yeah, Chris, you have the details. This item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Sterling Arcade Incorporated, doing business as Paradise Beer Yanni Point, located at 5310D, Winward Parkway, Milton, Georgia 3004. Mayor and council, in looking at where this sign is placed to give the public the notice that this hearing is occurring, it's required by our code that that sign be within 10 feet of the nearest street, and in this particular circumstance, it does not appear, and looking at that sign as though that distance requirement is met. If you can picture this location, it's down kind of off of Winward Parkway, behind the Asian Bistro between Nam and Mambo. So if the sign is posted immediately adjacent to the door, I can guarantee you that I know how to measure 10 feet, and that's a whole lot further than 10 feet. So what I'd like to do tonight is to entertain a motion to postpone, a motion to postpone until February 18th, 2015, at which time we'll work with this applicant to advertise in a legal manner.
Okay. Question I have for bring up, is that, so, I think you spelled it out, but is the applicant okay as far as, you know, if we postpone it, but the city will still work with them? Are we holding them up because of this?
I don't know that the applicant is here or not. This is something that I just flipped open this package tonight, and knowing the area well enough, I looked at the picture of the sign that we have in place, and I can just tell it doesn't meet conformance with the code. So we haven't, this is.
Is this a new business, or, you know, brand-new business, or is it change of ownership, or just a renewal?
Existing change of ownership.
Okay. So I guess my question is, is it open right now?
Yes.
Yes, they have a temporary license.
Okay, so that was my question, is this going to impact them, their business, or just postpone it?
It's just a formality that we need to make sure that we comply with the advertising requirement of the code.
How long are we going to postpone?
Postpone until February the 18th. So by temporary license, they're able to serve alcohol now?
Yes.
But until that becomes official with this, then it just essentially transfers the legal aspect of it to what they were doing, to what they can do, which is the same thing?
Same thing.
Okay.
Karen?
The agenda item would be 15-031.
Okay.
Technically, is it a motion to postpone or a motion to defer till the February 18th?
The city attorney recommended postpone.
Postpone? Okay.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we postpone Agenda Item Number 15-031 until February 18th to make sure that the notification and signage are in sync with one another.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria to postpone this item till February 18th, and a second one, Councilmember Morick. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, close that, well, actually, Ken, I did not close that hearing. Do I need to close that hearing and then re-vote on it, or?
We're going to have another public hearing in February. I think we're fine, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We can move on to our next public hearing item. Sudie, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution of the city of Milton, Georgia, enacting a moratorium for 180 days to bar the acceptance of any rezoning applications for property located in the 2014 Highway 9 Vision area. This is Agenda Item Number 15-027. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. This evening you have, for a public hearing, a matter that also pops up on your new business agenda as number two. This is a matter you probably recall, this is a moratorium or a continuation of a moratorium that you have already, at one prior date, extended for 180 days. This is based on the State Route 9 North Vision Plan that the city council approved on June 2 of 2014. You then promptly put in place a zoning moratorium with respect to new applications for rezoning within the boundaries of the plan because of the concern that the Milton zoning code really did not have the tools to realize your vision pursuant to the plan. So you've implemented this once on July 7th, after publication of legal notice, you went ahead and issued a moratorium for 180 days. It is set to expire under the zoning procedures law. We have to have another public hearing, and assuming this public hearing, depending upon what you hear, after the public hearing is closed, then when it comes up on new business number two, you may in fact go ahead and choose to extend the moratorium for an additional 180 days. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Any questions on this?
Can I highlight just one point now, and I can highlight it again when the item is called? Again, we anticipate from a staff perspective, even though this says it's 180 days, one of the things that can happen is that the adoption of a new code for that area, this moratorium would then expire. So just because it says 180 days doesn't mean that we aren't working towards a quicker solution than that. I can tell you that the form-based code that we intend on presenting starts through the process at the community zoning information meeting next Tuesday. In January, we anticipate that the planning commission will then be in review of the document in February, March-ish. We anticipate at this point that we will bring forward a code for you to consider on April the 20th. So I don't, I just want to put out there that we anticipate moving much quicker than the 180 days that the moratorium calls for, but since it has language in it that says it expires at the point that a code is adopted for this area, it's safe to go 180 days if we need it, but I really don't think we will.
Should be noted, too, to follow up with the city manager just said, when you approve, if you approve that new zoning code, this expires by operation of law. In other words, no formal action by you is required, it just ends. So, nice to know.
Okay. Now, thanks for that clarification, Chris, because I know there has been some interest in that. Okay. And I say that, you know, to clarify the fact that 180 days doesn't actually have to be 180 days. Okay? Anybody else? Not all open for motion?
We need to, we need to open up for public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, do we have any?
We do not, sir.
Public comments? Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing and then ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve a resolution of the city of Milton, Georgia, enacting a moratorium for 180 days to bar the acceptance of any rezoning applications for property located in the 2014 Highway 9 Vision area. Agenda item number 15-027.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion, Councilmember Luss.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to proceed really, that was the public hearing, so we closed the public hearing. We haven't called the actual agenda item under new business yet, so is it appropriate? Can they take a vote right now, or should we wait until it's called?
I mean, technically speaking, it needs to be called on the agenda. I regret that.
Okay. Never mind that motion and second.
Delay that last story.
Hold that thought.
We'll move on to, we'll move to, when it comes back. All right, Sudie, if you'll call our next item. We don't, we don't have any items on the zoning agenda, so we've got some unfinished business.
Consideration of an ordinance to amend Article 6, Financial Management Program, Division 7, Debt Management Policy, Agenda Item Number 15-006. First presentation was heard at the January 5th, 2015, regular city council meeting. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. This item is an item that you can actually take final action on this evening. This is an amendment to the city of Milton's financial management program. Within the context of the issuance of the revenue bond that the council had approved, our bond attorney, Roger Murray, took a look at our financial management program and does what he does for other jurisdictions as well, and that is, he makes recommendations as to potential changes that need to be implemented candidly, just to comply with IRS rules and regulations, and if in fact, in the event of an audit or some sort of scrutiny by a federal entity, looking at the viability and the integrity of our debt management practices, we want to make sure that we have the latest and greatest in our policies, and that is all this does. You'll see in your packet, there is a sort of a redlined or at least highlighted edited version of this pertaining to things like use of tax-exempt debt proceeds, certain record-keeping requirements and rules with respect to public-private partnerships. I know Mr. Murray, I worked with him in a lot of other jurisdictions, he does it for those jurisdictions as well, and just wants to make sure that our policies are as up-to-date as they can be. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Any more questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve an ordinance to amend Article 6, Financial Management Program, Division 7, Debt Management Policy, Agenda Item Number 15-006.
Second. I have a motion for approval, from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, now if we can move on to new business. Sudie, if you'll say on the first item.
Our first item is consideration of a resolution of the city of Milton, Georgia, to set qualifying fees for municipal elections. This is Agenda Item Number 15-028. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we are presenting to you by way of a resolution, the first step in our 2015 election process. This is procedurally required by Georgia Election Code 212131, which is to fix qualifying fees and legally publish these fees no later than February 1st. The qualifying fee is 3% of the total gross salary of the office. Once this resolution is adopted, I will legally publish this notice. Election Day this year is on November 3rd. We respectfully ask for your consideration of the resolution.
Okay. Any questions on this? Bill?
These fees are set by charter. Is this a similar action to restating our tax fee also? Do we have to restate it each year?
They're actually set by OCGA, they're governed by Georgia law.
Does anyone?
It's a certain percentage of the.
3%.
3%. It is set in the city charter.
The charter calls for the stipend that the council member receives, and as I understand it, it's 3% of the stipend that the charter calls for.
The charter shows the salary of the council members and the mayor, and then it's 3% of that salary.
Right. That's stated in the charter.
Right, right.
Why do we have to restate it? Why do we have to come up with another resolution?
To legally publish it, so those applicants that will try to qualify have notice of the fee, so when they qualify in August, they have, you know, there's some, they can do a poppers petition also. It just gives them legal notice of the amount of money required.
Councilmember Luss, is your question, since the compensation is set in the charter, why does this process have to be repeated?
Correct.
It's, as I understand, that it's just because Georgia law requires that the clerk publish these in the legal organ before February 1st of every year that there is an election. That's one. That's one.
Similar to restating our tax rate, I guess.
Yeah, exactly. Just a formal notification, and, you know, candidly, from a, I guess, from a sort of a due process perspective, if there was an individual that was interested in announcing their candidacy, they need to know as early as possible what the required buy-in is, because they have to pay that fee.
Well, I think by state law, it can't be more than 3%, right? Could it be less than 3%?
No, it is, it's flat.
It's a flat 3%?
That's correct. That's my understanding as well.
So first, because I know there are some jurisdictions that the council members don't receive any pay in some of the smaller cities.
It's 3% of the salary in the prior office, in the prior year's office, so whatever the salary was in the prior year, it's 3%, so I guess if they don't have a salary, then that's 3%.
3% enough. Let me work that out real quick. Yep, zero.
I've got a calculator on my phone.
Well, since Councilmember Hewitt is not here, but he's excused, I believe him and possibly some of the others that are up for our election had wanted to maybe move it up to $100,000 fee, but, I'm kidding. All right, is there any, I guess that doesn't help, though, because it's what's, the economy would have to pay the same thing.
Is that your motion?
But do I, do I have a motion on this item?
Mayor, I move to approve a resolution of the city of Milton, Georgia, to set qualifying fees for municipal elections. Agenda item number 15-028.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I think Longoria's official, he's the official motion maker tonight.
He's on a roll tonight.
He's going to get a gold star.
If there's any hesitation, he's jumping.
Let the city clerk please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution of the city of Milton, Georgia, enacting a moratorium for 180 days to bar the acceptance of any rezoning applications for property located in the 2014 Highway 9 Vision area. This is Agenda Item Number 15-027. A public hearing was held this evening at the regular city council meeting. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is, of course, the resolution to which we just had the public hearing and to which Councilmember Luss was good enough to make the motion to approve. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. I'll be up there. Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? If not, we'll let Councilmember Lusk make a motion. Thank you.
Sure. At this risk of being redundant here, I'll move to approve a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia, enacting a moratorium for 180 days to bar the acceptance of any rezoning applications for property located in the 2014 Highway 9 vision area, Agenda Item 15-027. Second.
Okay, motion for approval, council, from Councilmember Lusk, second from Councilmember Koots. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Sudi, if you'll, please call the next item.
All right. Our next item this evening is election of the mayor pro tem, Agenda Item Number 15029. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mayor and council, Ken asked me to handle this one tonight. There's really not a lot of presentations we made other than the charter calls for this election to have occurred at the last meeting that we were together. And since we didn't do it at the first meeting of the year, we're going to do it at the second meeting of the year. So procedurally, I think we're okay. But this is simply the election of a mayor pro tem from amongst the body. So I'll turn it over to the mayor and.
Okay. All right, again, this, procedurally, we need to, nothing against Councilmember Longoria.
Sure.
It's, it's time to make change. And I'm going to open up the council, I think Councilmember Lusk may have, wanted to make a motion.
I move to approve Karen Thurman as mayor pro tem for the, this coming year.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion, Councilmember Lusk, second, from Councilmember Koots, to approve Councilmember Thurman as the mayor pro tem for this year. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Would, procedurally, do we want to do the oath now or you just want to be good with that, Councilmember Thurman? I guess.
Sure.
Didn't really ask you, but you got nominated and elected and you didn't say no. So.
I didn't oppose.
That sounded like a well-thought-out plan. I don't know.
If you want to stop forward here, then we'll. All right, you'll raise your hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear in the firm.
I solemnly swear in the firm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
Of mayor pro tem of the city.
Mayor pro tem of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, congratulations, Councilmember Thurman. The support nomination support of all your peers here. So. All right. Looks like it'll be it. We'll move on to reports and presentations. Anybody on the council have anything they want to report on?
It's quick and easy.
We get a status on the pavilion?
I can, I can do that. Yes, the status is, it's coming along. They're moving on at this point to really the, the finishing touches that happen on the earth themselves. The, so the concrete go in and then you see landscaping come in later this week. We're ready for February, what day is it, February? We selected a date for ribbon cutting. Do anybody have that off the top of their head? About the second to third week of February. But it's on, it's, it's, it's coming together. And really what's left is just the site, the finishing site work and to finish the fence and paint the fence and that kind of stuff. I hope you have been by there. It's, it's been a really neat, a really neat space to see it materialize.
It looks good.
How about the Thomas Byrd Senior House?
Byrd House.
Carter can give a little bit on that.
That's moving forward too. Look to be finishing that out probably the end of February. Working on some finishing touches inside, finishing some site work outside right now. So it's, it's ahead of the contractual schedule and pretty much on schedule for what we anticipated it to be.
Do you have a question about that? Sometimes early in the morning, like off hours at 6:00 a.m., the lights are all shining in the house. Do we just leave them on at night or are people actually in there working at that time?
Well, I don't know that people are working at that time. Some of the lights are on for security. We've got some of the appliances and things inside. And so the contractor has asked that we leave particularly some of the outside lights that would normally be on a dimmer and a timer on at this point until we get the facility occupied. So, and some of it is probably the contractor just left them on.
Okay.
Now, I just want to say I thank you, the staff, for the, the weekly updates on the Birmingham-Providence intersection because I think those updates help answer a lot of questions and show how receptive the, the city is to the comments that are made.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to staff. Chris?
Mayor, we've got just a couple tonight. One, I just want to let you know that we kicked off the architectural component of our new city hall facility with the architects yesterday. So that kickoff meeting occurred at Cooper Carey. So we're on a, on the timeline now, the calendar is being honed in to make sure that we meet all of our deadlines. But I just want to let you know that that kickoff meeting was successful.
And I might add that Chris was talking to me about that. And I said, whoa, 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 wait a minute. You've already ticked off the architect? And he said, no kickoff. I said, a little early. Pick them up. Where the client? Anyway, go ahead.
The second staff report, and this one's probably the more important of the two, is that we are nearing that point in our transition over to our new public safety radio system that we're about to have to make some very hard and difficult to reverse decisions. I say that because we entered into an IGA with Fulton County for the provision of those radio services to exist for the duration of this entire calendar year, subject to a 60-day termination clause. We always believed, and I think when we presented that, we believed that we were going to be ready to cut over to our new system on April the 1st of 2015. So on the, end of the first quarter would be that termination. I don't know if I'm here tonight to tell you that we believe that is still accurate or not. But what I'm here to tell you is that on Friday, two days from today, at 10 o'clock in the morning, we will meet as a radio authority and we'll have an update from the staff as well as our attorneys and other members of the board, and be making decisions as to whether or not the four municipalities issue that letter of termination on February the 1st. We don't meet again until February the 2nd. So there is the possibility that, and we might not be the only ones in this circumstance, but there is the possibility that we will need to issue a notice of termination to Fulton County effective April the 1st for the radio system before I have the opportunity to bring it back and present it to you. So the guidance that I need tonight is whether or not you recognize that that's a, something that we will be doing along with other municipalities and you'll allow me to issue that termination letter if in fact it's warranted, and then bring it for your ratification on February the 2nd, recognizing that as the city attorney has said, the dime may be cast at that point and we, it might be a very hard thing to undo if in fact we do that. The other bit of guidance I would want is if in fact you don't feel comfortable doing that, and I needed to call a special meeting of the council to be able to get the council's authority, I would need to be able to do that at some point during the week, next week. So I just kind of want to know what your comfort level is. Should we issue the letter of termination? We're going to be doing it with the cities of Sandy Springs, Roswell, and Alpharetta. So we're not doing it alone. But if we have any reason to believe that we won't make the April 1st date, we certainly won't issue the termination letter. I can tell you that the project is on track. The equipment is in Atlanta. The equipment has been tested. The buildings and shelters are at the tower location sites. The towers are built. There's nothing at this point that would indicate that we're not a go for April the 1st. But I don't want to all of a sudden put our eggs in our basket and tell you that's the truth until I have the meeting this Friday at 10 o'clock in the morning. So a little bit of guidance on that topic would be appreciated, but we're about ready to, about ready to switch over.
Okay.
Personally, I believe that we have a radio authority for a reason, and that's to make those decisions and just let us know when, whatever the authority decides is best, I'm fine with.
I concur.
Okay. Everybody else good with that? Okay. In your hands.
That's what I have tonight, Mayor.
Okay. All right. We added a executive session to discuss personnel by motion in, in our agenda. So do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel?
Some of them.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. That's unanimous.